Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled Beaver Creek City Council Meeting for July 27. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bales.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. This time, I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Curran for a plan.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I'd ask for a moment of silence. This week Beaver Creek lost a great leader, developer, philanthropist, involved deeply in the Beaver Creek community and his future, Mr. Bob Mills. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have an agenda before us this evening, and before we go any further, I have, it has been requested that we remove item 10(c). Any other input on the agenda? I have a motion to amend.
Motion to amend? Second?
I have a motion and a second to amend the agenda by removing item 10(c). All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of minutes for July 13, 2020, the regular meeting minutes.
So moved. Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for July 13 as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Prescheduled presenters. Tonight, we have 2019 audit review. Mr. Vaughn. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. It's good to be with you this evening to discuss your 2019 audit. You should have a copy of the single audit reports. This gives a good summary of the audit. It doesn't include your financial statement report, the CAFR, but that would be much too long to go through tonight, a couple hundred pages long. If you turn into this report, I'll kind of give an overview, page by page, and then there's a good summary schedule at the back where we'll concentrate most of our time. So when you turn in here to page one, this is the city's schedule of expenditures of federal wards, and as you can see, the city expended 3.5 million in 2019 in federal wards, and the two major grants were the funds coming through from ODOT highway planning and construction, 2.2 million, and then the disaster grants, public assistance with FEMA, 1.2 million. If you turn to pages two and three, this is the Yellow Book Report, and this is required by government auditing standards. This report gives results related to internal control and compliance that's material to the financial statements, and we'll cover the results as we get to the end of this. And then the next two pages, this is what is called the Uniform Guidance Report, and this also is a report on internal control and compliance, and this relates to the testing related to the major federal program. And then turn to pages six and seven, and this will give all the results for all the different pieces of the audit. So here, you'll see up here at the top, under financial statements, the city got an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which would be the CAFR report, and unmodified is what we consider kind of street language would be a clean audit report. And then under that, internal control over financial reporting, this section covers the results of the Yellow Book Report, which was on pages two and three, and this material weaknesses identified, no significant deficiencies identified, none reported, and noncompliance material to the financial statements, no. The next section is federal wards. This is the Uniform Guidance Report related to our testing of the major federal program. Again, material weakness, no significant deficiency identified, none reported, and then type of auditor's report would be unmodified or a clean audit opinion on the Uniform Guidance Report, and then audit findings related to the CFR, no. And then it identifies our major federal program. We tested the disaster grant, the FEMA grant. We were required by the federal regulation, if your federal expenditures are under 10 million, we have a 20 percent coverage ratio, which is because you're considered a low-risk audit based on the results of prior audits and the fact that you continually have a single audit every year. So we did the FEMA grant, which was 1.2 million, which gives us out of 3.5, gives us our required coverage. And then findings related to financial statements reported under GAGUS, none, and federal ward finding in question costs, none. And then on page seven, this is a recap. If there were any major issue, material issues in the prior audit, we would cover those and whether they were corrected. There were none that needed to be followed up on, no material.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Was this a little more difficult with the tornado and the FEMA than it was, would be in, say, previous years?
Not really too much. We did have, we do the city of Trotwood also. They got the same, same grant there, but there, you know, we've tested FEMA in prior years, so it, you know, all things went real smoothly, you know, with COVID coming out in March and April, and, you know, we were pretty much right on time, I would say, with the audit, so, you know, I'm still working on some cities now that are going, we hope get done in August, so.
We appreciate the clean audit, and we appreciate our staff for allowing for a clean audit as well.
Right.
Thanks to both.
Thank you.
Public hearing, PC 20-3.
This is a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing an update of the land use plan.
Good evening.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The case you have before you is the first reading of ordinance 15-27, or case PC 20-30. It's the five-year, five-year update of the Beaver Creek Land Use Plan. We started, the staff started, began collaborating with our engineering department in summer of last year, actually had a working session with Planning Commission in December of last year, and then Planning Commission approved the draft of the land use plan in January. We did bring a draft of that to city council in February and then had a successful public open house in March, right before everything started closing down, so we got that, luckily got that in and out before we weren't allowed to have anybody here. Wanted to bring this forward sooner, but this was the first chance that we actually had to bring this forward, so this is the first reading. We're anticipating a second reading at the next meeting, and then because of a 30-day period of referendum period, the land use plan would be in effect in September, assuming we got through the way we anticipate. In terms of the proposed changes, the, we won't go through them page by page, but in general, the largest changes were the creation of a new category, the mixed-use category, and actually, within this proposed update, there's 1,150 acres of changes, and a big bulk of that is changes from research and development in high-tech manufacturing, or a few, in a few cases, from medium or low-density residential to the mixed-use. And the mixed-use category is intended to be just what it sounds like. It's a mixed-use where there can be a residential component, but it's also intended for it to be co-developed with some commercial and office development as well. We also, there was several different categories for open use in terms of public facility, which was all of the city public facilities, and then there was open use public, which is all of our parks, and then there was open space private, which was predominantly Walnut Grove Country Club and then the area surrounding the former YMCA, and we kind of combined all that into an open space and public facilities. We're just trying to clean out the map and make it not, so there wasn't 20 different categories and make it a lot harder to read. Actually, it was more of a visual thing. Also, one thing that we were proposing to change was upping the medium-density residential. Right now, the maximum density is five and a half or 5.51, and we're proposing to bring that up to six to one units an acre. Really, there was only, there's only like 30 or 40 acres in the city that's actually vacant and medium-density residential, so it's only an addition of 20 to 30 units citywide, so it's not a big thing, but we wanted to, the areas that there are vacancies, we wanted to see a little bit, a few more units being able to be developed, just because of the way, the vacant areas are, there's a lot of natural features that, you know, will require more condensed growth in areas and, such as streams and rivers and steep hills, so that they'll have to consolidate growth in more closer, closer areas rather than spread out in lower density. And there was some VPAs that are no longer, which is a vacant planning area, and they're no longer vacant, such as where Traditions of Beaver Creek and North Grumman and a few other areas that just no longer are vacant, so it wasn't really appropriate to categorize them as vacant planning areas. So all in all, again, 1,150 acres of changes, but a majority of them were just to that medium or mixed-use. And you can see here on this map, this map on the right is the proposed 2020 land use plan. You can see like Mission Point, the area to the west of City Hall, and then the large farm that's on north and east and west of North Fairfield and Indian Ripple. Those are the areas where we propose to change from single-family or the research and development to the mixed-use, and the mixed-use you can see on the map is proposed in blue. And this is kind of a closer view of the proposed 2020 map, where a majority of it is still, you know, over two-thirds of the city is proposed as residential, and about a fifth of the city is commercial or office, and then about 10 percent is the open space and public use, which is really, it goes hand in hand with what we have now, just a little bit more of it is mixed-use because we did go from residential to mixed-use. But all in all, not a large change in the makeup of the land use plan is what we have now. Planning Commission did recommend approval. There was a few minor text changes in the, in the plan that, from what I took to Planning Commission, I highlighted those in yellow, but it really was mostly just verbiage, not anything substantial. And just wanted to point out to both the city council tonight and anybody that's listening, this isn't, we're not proposing any zoning changes to the land use plan, it's just a guiding document, so that if somebody did want to come in and rezone a property that, you know, right now is agricultural or low-density residential, and they wanted to do something different, we would look back on that land use plan and say, your proposed changes aren't compatible or compatible. So right now, we're not proposing any changes to the zoning code, it's just the long-term goals of the city. But again, Planning Commission and staff recommend approval, and I'll be happy to answer any questions following the public hearing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone here this evening that would like to address council on this, on this land use update, please come forward and give us a name and address. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and we will open it up to council. Council, I know we've had time to review this for a while, and so does there, anybody have any input? Just chime in if you do.
I have just a couple of comments and maybe perhaps one question. I think that creating the open space, public use, singular category makes a lot of sense, but I just want to make sure that the intent of future developments on any of those open spaces compared to conservation land is clarified as those properties come into the city, so that, you know, down the road, time or two, there's no conflict between what was intended to be parkland or conservation versus development.
The only areas that we actually changed from, that had any change was Walnut Grove because it was private open space, and if it ever sold and it was, it was classified as open space, they wouldn't have been able to do anything with it, and that's, and we didn't want to see that as being a regulatory taking, but everything else does have the open space designation, and there's no expectation for any kind of development other than what it has now. I mean, that's why we wanted to keep it to open space, so that there would be no expectation for commercial or retail or anything to go on that.
And I think that makes a lot of sense. I'm just thinking of in the future, when properties are acquired and so forth, that those understandings are, you know, noted.
Okay, yeah, anything that we would, anything that the city or county or any other public entity would acquire would ultimately, at the next land use update, we'll probably take that as well.
Very good. I think you did a great job of evaluating all the VPAs and designating them appropriately. I did have one question on the corridor studies. I was kind of wondering why the North Fairfield Road corridor wasn't designated in there. You've got a lot of the east-west corridors, but I didn't, I didn't specifically see the North Fairfield Road corridor, and it seems like an important one.
Most assuredly, it's important. We, we did do Dayton-Zenia Road corridor because it was more of an aging, older area, and there's a lot of, a lot of older houses that in the future, we anticipate to go with the office, you know, the, reappropriate the houses for office uses, not reappropriate, but reuse the houses as office space. North Fairfield Road, if you go north of basically Speedway, I mean, it's newer commercial development, and we wouldn't anticipate much change in terms of any kind of reuse of buildings because they're, I mean, they're all being used as commercial now. The only area that North Fairfield that isn't really being utilized as commercial and is between suburban and Speedway, and really, we wouldn't anticipate that doing, having anything but staying residential. Corridor studies is what, we've done those over the years. I think Indian Ripple Road was done early, the early 90s or almost mid-90s. We did Colonel Glenn corridor study and Dayton-Zenia study probably about five years ago, all in one. We just, we've never done a North Fairfield Road corridor study, and that's something that can be done, and we would certainly add it to this plan if we did do one.
Okay.
But I wouldn't anticipate the areas on North Fairfield, particularly north of suburban to go and up to Speedway going, thing but stay residential.
I agree with that. I do, I do think that we have aging infrastructure and housing stock and everything else along that corridor, all the way down through to South Fairfield, you know, that
Sure.
That needs to be eventually looked at, especially with the change in the, the land use plan to the mixed, that's right.
Yeah, down on the Dernball property, yeah. A corridor study, I mean, that'd be something we can surely, surely look at in the future on a North Fairfield corridor study, north or south or both of 35.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, I concur with Councilmember Bales. I like the change to the mixed use, and I like a number of the changes to the VPAs, just in terms of describing how the land can be used. VPA 41, the Creekside Trail, for example, linking it to the bike trail, I thought was a nice touch, as an example. Following that, in terms of the Indian Ripple planning area, because that falls under a mixed usage in places, is that, is there an expectation that we'll see a green style where we have housing with shops and things of that nature? Would it become like a major, would it be an extension of the green, like plausibly?
Are we talking about the VPA 93 or the Dernball?
There are some that are linked to the planning areas.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we would anticipate more commercial being right along the corridor, and then either low, low-intense office uses immediately behind that to buffer the residential areas that are just to the north and south of the corridor planning areas, as acting as a transition. We would, we would take those on a case-by-case basis as they come in, but the, the intent of the planning areas is so that we can bring anything that would develop in there through as an AZRA process. That's, that was our overall intent, putting those overlays on there, so that we could bring those in and add conditions and make sure that there's appropriate screening and buffering with the neighbors.
Thank you.
Anyone? Please.
Question on Dayton-Zenia.
Is that a working farm, Randy?
The Dayton-Zenia, are we talking about the one west of here?
41 acres, something like that.
I've seen livestock out there, so I, yeah, I mean, they
Okay, that's not on the market, then.
Oh, no, this is just
Instead of planting.
If somebody, if it were to go on the market and somebody wants to buy it, we could fall back on this and say, hey, listen, you're not going to put something there that's not compatible with the land use plan, so.
Well, it's very well done. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much, and this is, yes, and we do this every five years, and some of it is just reflective of how times have changed, and mixed-use is one of those situations where you're seeing more and more of that all around the country, and so thank you, and thank the Planning Commission. All right, do I have a motion to move ordinance 20-15 to the, onto its second reading?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 20-15 onto the second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next public hearing is PC 20-04.
This is a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing update to the zoning code update.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Before you is the 2020 proposed zoning code update. As you all are aware, we went through kind of a preliminary review of these changes in February of this year, and it has been some time since that happened, just due to everything that's going on. So we're here tonight with those changes, but also with a few additional ones that have come up in the past four months. So I will get started with the kind of review, the changes that we talked about in that first work session, and then in the second half, I'll just quickly go over the proposed, the new proposed changes that you guys have not seen yet. So the first one that we discussed previously was solar farms. We don't have a definition in our code currently for solar farms, and we also do not have a category in our Schedule of Permitted Uses for farm, for the solar farms. So we did add them into our Schedule of Permitted Uses, and they would be conditionally allowed in B4, I-1, and I-2 zoning districts. So with that conditional allowance, it would require a one hearing at Planning Commission, and that would be in just those B4, I-1, and I-2 districts. However, if they were to go into an industrial PUD or a commercial PUD, then they would have to go through the entire specific site plan process, Planning Commission, and city council as well. So they do have those options. So the solar farms, this is specifically for large solar operations for commercial gain, so even if a, a commercial operation decides to install solar panels specifically for themselves just to provide energy for themselves, this does not apply to them. So Walgreens and Walmart both have, you know, pretty large solar arrays on their roofs currently. This, this doesn't apply to those. This is for large-scale sale of solar pen, solar power. We also made a change to the parking requirements for medical, dental, and veterinary clinics. Currently, the code requires that there be three parking spaces for every exam room. That is not changing, however, we added a threshold of 20 rooms, so once you hit that 20-room limit, then that number is reduced from three, three parking spaces to one parking space per exam room, and that's simply to address the larger medical complexes of, like children's, it's coming in now, and then also SOIN, when you, when you talk about facilities that have that many exam rooms, they're not all going to be used concurrently like they would in a small clinic, and so then you end up over-parking the site when you specifically just address, you know, three spaces per exam room. So we wanted to, to, to address that issue. And we also added a provision in our use, parking, and storage of vehicles and recreational vehicles to prohibit the overnight parking of commercial vehicles outside of fully enclosed buildings, and this excludes the vehicles that are actually owned by that business or the vehicles that are making scheduled deliveries. So this is to address semi-trucks, you know, large commercial vehicles that are just passing through and then just park themselves overnight in a Walmart or in front of a Lowe's. And then with zoning permits, we just added a provision, just an additional step, when zoning permits are submitted to us, if they're located within some sort of sanitary easement or some sort of drainage easement, that they'd be required to go through the engineering department for additional review, just to make sure that they aren't causing any issues with drainage if they're putting a fence or a shed in, in, within some sort of drainage easement. And then the appendix, as I stated, we added solar pan, solar farms into the appendix of, appendix B, Schedule of Permitted Uses. We're also proposing to add indoor shooting ranges, those have not been addressed previously. Those would be conditionally permitted in B2, B3, and B4 districts. And then also, we just removed a redundancy. We have an entire category for contractor services, and then we had another one for plumbing supply, and we just wanted to make sure that all of those were together, makes it easier for everyone and also gets rid of some discrepancies between the two different types of uses. And then a couple of changes that we're proposing that you guys did not see in the February work session. One of those has to do with the definition of additions. I would say 10 years ago, we added a provision in the code that required that all additions be architecturally compatible with the existing principal structure. We, in attempting to enforce that, over time, we found it very onerous and difficult, so we removed it from the zoning code. However, we just found out that we hadn't removed it from the definitions section of the code, so we just need to strike that because it's, it's not referencing anything in the code anymore because we did remove that. Also, covered porches on accessory structures. We have always included the non-enclosed covered porch part of an accessory structure as part of the square footage, however, it was never specified in the code, so there was never anything we could actually point to and say, you know, this is, this is included. So we just wanted to make sure that we cover all our bases in case anyone were to ever question it, and, you know, to make sure that, that is covered by the code, that the portion of the accessory structure that isn't enclosed still counts, so everything that's under roof counts towards your maximum square footage. And then finally, we had a couple of changes with fences, just within the past few months. I don't know if it's the situation that's going on right now, but we have seen a significant number of fence permits coming through our office, and so this has kind of brought up a few issues that we thought that needed to be addressed. The first of which is the height regulation that we have in, in the code. It doesn't allow for fences over 42 inches in a front yard. We just wanted to make sure that that is, only applies to residential and commercial zoning districts. It doesn't make sense to limit fences in agricultural district to 42 inches because that is not going to hold any animals in, and if you go around the city, you know, the Dernball property and a couple of other properties have split-rail fences that are well over that 42 inches. It's something that we have always, we've always enforced that way, but again, it was never specifically outlined in the code, so this makes it easier for someone to, you know, they're just looking in the code and they'll be able to see there that they can go ahead and have a 40, taller than 42-inch fence if they're in an agricultural district. We also changed the provision for chain-link fences in, in the rear yard to a maximum of five feet in height. So currently, if you have a swimming pool in your rear yard, you have to have a, at least a five-foot fence, and so people are wanting to put in a five-foot chain-link fence, and currently, it's, it's not permitted, so we did change that to allow for the five-foot in height, no taller than five feet. And then finally, we did add Kentucky three-board fences. They weren't specifically outlined before, and we've had a few people requesting those. The Kentucky three-board fence is actually the fence on the left, and then the split-rail fence is the fence on the right, and those, we changed the provisions for those two fences to not allow them to be any taller than four feet inside and rear yards because Kentucky three-board fences and split-rail fences don't look very good when they're six feet tall, and so we did get quite a few complaints on those, so we decided to kind of nip that in the bud now when we just had a couple and, and go from there. So staff is recommending approval, obviously, of these proposed changes, and if you have any questions, I can answer those following the public hearing.
Thank you. All right, this is another public hearing. If there's anyone here this evening that If there's anyone here this evening that would like to address council on this zoning, the zoning code update, please come forward and give a name and address. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and we will open it up to council input. Anyone have any input on this side of the room?
Good fences make good neighbors, Your Honor.
Are you finished, Josh?
Okay. Just checking. I just want to commend staff. This is a great zoning additions. The one thing that I am really pleased with is the permitting to address the drainage issues. Coming from Planning Commission prior, we always have residents that are concerned with drainage issues. So, I think that that is a great addition to the zoning code. So, well done. Thank you.
I was just going to echo the great work. I really appreciate it. I remember going through all of the initial changes in depth. Was it last year or sometime we went through all of that? So, I do remember all of that, and you answered all my questions back then. And I think all of the new additions that you showed tonight make total sense, and I think they're very, very well thought and reasoned. So, thank you for bringing this to us, too.
Anyone?
Yeah, Councilmember Schwartz was talking about the Planning Commission. So, from the border zoning appeals, the fences make a lot of sense.
Yes.
My, my one concern is, and you partially answered this with the classification of the solar farm, but even, you know, 20 minutes east of here, this is a very big and contentious issue that is going on in Green County. So, I might advocate for a second reading, just because it's the type of thing that might interest residents to discuss. Not far from here, this, there's a number of proposals where this is quite controversial, and it's the, it might interest residents to talk through in, in more detail. So, that's my kind of singular comment slash question, if anyone would like to address.
Page. Don?
No, I don't have any comments, other than to thank you for all the work you put into this because I know it's been, taken a lot of hours to do this and go through it word by word to make sure that things are right, and we really appreciate that effort.
I just have one quick question, and that is reference to solar. On a, on an onsite solar, we're not talking about a solar farm, but on the onsite, do those require a permit?
Yes.
Okay.
They require a permit, and they have to meet the requirements of accessory structures, so 10 feet from property lines. We also have some other, some other requirements for them as well, as far as how tall they can be and that kind of thing. But yes.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone else have anything? Do I hear a motion to move this on to the second reading?
Mr. Mayor, I'm motion to move ordinance 20-16 to the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 20-16 on to the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Motion carries. Thank you. And we have another public hearing. This is the 2021 tax budget.
This is a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing the tax budget for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2021, and ending December 31st, 2021.
Please.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. This actually is the resolution for the modified tax budget that we have to forward to Green County Auditor. It's required by the ORC, 5705.284, each jurisdiction to complete a tax budget. But as we've experienced every place else, there's changes to be made and modifications to be made, and this tax budget was like no other tax budgets we've ever done. We kind of follow the same process as we normally do, but they modify the form, and they have the authority to do that. So, they told us we didn't have to go through the official tax budget process, but developed a new form for us called the estimated available resources for the calendar year, which basically informs the county auditor that what our beginning fund balance was, what the revenue was going to be generated from the property tax, which they gave us, and the local government fund, which they gave us, and then any other sources that we had that would contribute to the overall revenue. What's interesting about this one was it had nothing to do with the expenditure side, which is normally part of the traditional tax budget. So, we complied with the rule and completed the aforementioned new document that they had forwarded to us. And again, with this resolution, that adopts that. And we'll send that over to the county auditor. We just had to do that by the end of July to get that started. And just remember that this is actually the first step in the budget process for the 2021. We went over that Saturday, what the steps are. But right now, we're generating a, a budget. We'll be sending out that out to the departments. That'll be reviewed. Then in November, you'll have a couple of meetings to go over the details of the budget before it's finally adopted in December. So, that's when you adopt the 2021 appropriations budget. So, again, you are two immediate meetings, formally review the process, look at all the capital improvement programs, the five-year capital improvement program. So, and again, those are open to the public for their review and to take a look at what we have planned for 2021. And with that, staff is recommending the approval of the modified tax budget, is what I'm calling it, for, in compliance with the ORC.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope, just if anybody had any questions about the...
Well, this is a public hearing. We got to let, we got to give, we got to put an announcement here. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address council on this tax budget? If so, please come forward and give us a name and address. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and now we will open it up for questions for Mr. Cussera. He's eager to get a few, I think. Anyone?
Bill, thank you for preparing the numbers that the county gave to you to prepare. I've always found the tax budget to be somewhat superfluous to everything, anyway. But, no, I, I think it's a good first step, and I appreciate the work.
Anyone? And of course, we're already congratulating for the clean audit, and that's, this is all part of that process. So, once again, thank you. This happens to be the tax budget, so it is, does not move on to the, to a second reading. So, if there's no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2021 tax budget.
So move, Your Honor.
Sir.
Anyone, any other comments? May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Doer?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bales?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. Thank you very much. Next, ordinance resolutions and PUDs. Ordinance 20-17.
This is an ordinance to vacate a portion of public right-of-way of Rock Drive upon application of the owners of property abutting the same right-of-way and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. As you know, for the past several months, construction has been underway for the new medical center development located along the west side of North Fairfield Road and just to the north of Rock Drive. In keeping with the approved site plan for the project, the developer has recently submitted a request for the vacation of the old right-of-way for Rock Drive. If you look on the drawing here, again, here's North Fairfield Road, and here is the old Rock Drive. The piece to be vacated is highlighted in yellow, and it begins at this property line here and extends to the terminus of the old Rock Drive. And obviously, the, the old right-of-way served to provide access to all the homes that used to be out there. But obviously, since the redevelopment of the site, those homes are no longer there, and this right-of-way no longer serves any transportation purposes for the city. I should also say that the developer is going to be dedicating new right-of-way to the city, highlighted in blue right here. And this will serve to extend Rock Drive to the future on Lance Road Extension to tie all this together at some point. I should mention also, the developer is asking this be passed, that council consider an emergency ordinance. The reason being is they're anxious to get the, the right-of-way, the plat filed and the right-of-way dedicated does not slow up the work. And having this as an emergency will allow for the plat to be recorded and things to progress at a quicker pace. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. This is the first reading of this ordinance. Is there anyone tonight that would like to address council on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will move forward. Any discussion? Looks like it's cut and dry as to why that's being vacated. Any questions on the emergency part of it? Do I have a motion?
I'm moved to approve ordinance 20-17 as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 20-17 as an emergency. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Doer?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bales?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. Thank you. Next is Resolution 20-17.
This is a resolution to proceed with placing a 1% municipal income tax on the November 3rd, 2020 ballot and to certify the same to the Green County Board of Elections.
Thank you. Mr. Cussera.
Good evening. And this is with the passage of the City of Beaver Creek Income Tax Ordinance, which was 20-09, which has established the City of Beaver Creek's income tax code. The next phase of this is to place the income tax on the ballot for residents' consideration in order to meet the filing deadline from the Board of Elections for the November 3rd general election ballot. A resolution has to be passed at this council meeting to get that on the ballot. And the attached resolution has been created to meet the statutory requirements to place the income tax issue on November 3rd, should council approve, approve the resolution. And happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. This is a resolution. It is not, so there are no public hearings in, in the process of a resolution. But we will have some council input. Councilmember Bales, you have any comment?
Sure. Just a comment. Thank you for the work putting this together. Thank you for the team of citizens who did a lot of work behind the scenes getting the income tax code, and it's going to be working on, on this for the ballot initiative. I, I really can't think of a more democratic thing to do than to provide the ability for our citizens to decide for themselves how our local government is funded. So, that's all this legislation is doing, is determining that we can put it on the ballot and, and let our citizens choose. I've said all along that Beaver Creek desperately needs an alternative revenue source to fund our infrastructure needs, and this legislation gives our constituents the ability to cast the boat, the vote, to fundamentally change how our city is funded. That's challenging, but I believe appropriate. We are faced with tough times with COVID and, and with social issues that are facing us all, and we're uncertainty on how we're going to be able to get to the ballot this November. But I think timing is critical, that we do put, put it on the ballot as soon as possible. I think we also need to take time to educate our friends and neighbors on the impacts of this initiative, but ultimately, request that they make the decision for themselves in November. So, I'm in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Doer?
No further comment.
Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you. Sorry, I kind of feel the collective sigh of tension as I turn on my mic. Thank you very much for putting all this together. I really appreciate it. I think my councilmembers know that I've been the most outspoken in my concerns with putting this on the November ballot. But in rereading the emails that I've received from many residents, which I'm very grateful for, as well as rethinking all of the conversations we've had with people who stood before us, both for and against it, I think Councilmember Bales put it perfectly, that I can't think of a more democratic thing to do than to put it on the November ballot. And I do have my concerns, based in, you know, stemming from the current situation and the current world we're facing. But I think in, in what I've read in my emails and what I've seen in people in front of me and on the phone conversations I've had, is that everyone is so split that it's not fair for me to say whether or not this should be voted on because there's such a clear, i- it's clear that the people need to vote on this. So, I'll be voting in favor to put it on the ballot. And I really want to also thank my fellow councilmembers for hearing my concerns and for the open conversations that we've had to really help me, you know, really think this through because this is a big decision. And I don't think there's a group of people who have been more serious about this than the people sitting up here right now, who really took this to heart to make sure that we do what's best for the residents. And I think that Mr. Councilmember Bales put it perfect. It's the democratic thing to do. So, take time to educate yourselves. If you have questions, please call us. There's a lot of information in there, and it can get confusing. So, please make sure you take the time to read how this will or will not affect you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to echo Councilwoman Garcia's comments. I, too, have kind of been on the fence and went back and forth as to whether or not a November placement is proper, given COVID and the state of current affairs. And I do also have to echo, I work, we have such a great group up here, and it has been very transparent. We've been able to converse with each other. And I don't want to steal Mayor's thunder, but one of the comments that he had made was he had done a little bit of digging and looked into voter turnout in comparison of a primary and a presidential election, and it was double. And that was very, I took that very seriously in my consideration as to whether or not I was going to vote to put this on the ballot in November. And in an effort of transparency, I think that it is in the best interest of the community to put it on. I think we're going to have an excellent voter turnout for this election. And so, I think that getting this in front of as many people as possible is in the best interest of the City of Beaver Creek. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Curran?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, I wanted to congratulate Mr. Cussera for the work that he's put forward, and particularly the committee with Brian chairing that and the members of it who worked day in and day out to try to put it together. As the councilmember Bales said, this is a time for education, and there's going to be ample opportunity for people to educate themselves, get more information. And with the kind of turnout that we have in a presidential election, my hope is that people will support the income tax for the City of Beaver Creek. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've done a lot of talking to people throughout my community, or throughout Beaver Creek community. And also, I want to thank the people who sent emails and those that have shown up here at council meetings to give us their input. I really appreciate everybody coming up and speaking up and letting their feelings be, be heard. I have to say, most of the people I've talked with are in favor of this. And so, I, and I, I agree with Councilman Bales that we have to put it out in front of the people. It's not our decision to make. It's, it's our voters that are going to make that decision for us. And I think that's the way it should be. And education is, is going to be a big part of that. I think a lot of people need to understand what the need is there. We just have to articulate that in, in ways that people understand that because there are some, some things out there that we just can't touch with any other tax base that we get. And I don't want to see Beaver Creek fall apart. And I think it's, it's aging. It's 40 years old now. And I think with all of the things that, like everything else, it ages. It has to be repaired, and if we, we have to have money to repair it. It's, it's not something that we can just magically say it'll be fixed, because it won't. So, again, I, I do want to thank everybody that's come to council meetings, sent us emails, called us on the telephone, and, and give us their opinion on, on this. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. When you start talking about aging, I thought you were looking at... You know, you got to be careful. But anyway, no, it's been a, it's been a interesting journey. And we certainly have all had our opinions, and we are not afraid to express them to each other. And that's what's good about this group, is that we can talk openly and we can discuss things back and forth. I want to thank the couple past mayors that are here that have worked on this, Mayor Jarvis and Mayor Graff. The, and then all the other citizens that worked with you for, it's been almost two years, I guess, now, that you've been working on this. It's not, not 100% recognizable from when you started, but it's been the back and forth between you all and the city and our staff and the public as well. I think it's a straightforward plan. So, of course, tonight, we already agreed on the type of tax. So, that was done at our previous meeting. Tonight is to whether or not we put it on the... Tonight is to whether or not we put it on the ballot in November, and I agree with everything that's been said up here, that, you know, it is the time, and I think the more people that have their voices heard, the better off we're going to understand what the public wants, whether it's a yes or whether it's a no. And so, we are going to have the largest turnout at a presidential election, it's always that way, and so that's why I am in favor of putting on it in November. So, that being said, do I have a motion?
No move.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 20-17, and it's been suggested by our legal staff that we do this by roll call. Is there any objection to that? May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Bales.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Councilmember Doer.
Yes.
Mayor Stone.
Yes. Unanimous decision to approve the ordinance at a previous meeting, and a unanimous decision to place it on the ballot in November. So I thank you all, and I thank the citizens as well. Moving on, decision items, acceptance of second quarter financial summary.
I'll just say that from the Finance Department, you've got a little bit of everything today. You've got the past audit, the current situation, and the future tax budget, so I think all the documents speak for themselves.
All right, any discussion? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the second quarter financial summary.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the second quarter financial summary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries, thank you. At this time, we're moving on to council time, and we'll start on the other end. Councilmember Kern.
I don't have anything right now, Your Honor.
You want to reserve the right to comment back? All right, we'll move on. Councilmember Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to echo the moment of silence that was given, or the beginning of this meeting. Bob Mills was not only a developer, but more importantly, he was a philanthropist in this community, and it's been kind of astounding to hear all of the stories that have come to light recently, and articles that have been published, and if any of you haven't had a chance to read some of them, I highly, highly encourage it. He was a pillar of our community, and frankly, I think that we could all learn a lesson from Mr. Mills and strive to follow in his footsteps, so I just kind of wanted to echo that moment of silence in his memory. Next thing is Kiwanis is going to be having a fundraiser this Wednesday, July 29, at Milano's, so if you are interested, please let me know or reach out to someone in Kiwanis, we can get you a flyer. Any meal that you purchase on the 29th, 20% of that will go back to Kiwanis, so encourage participation there. And last, but certainly not least, I know that we say this frequently, but truly, staff, just thank you for everything that you do. For those of you who may not know, we had a work session this Saturday, and there was so much work that was put into it by our staff. It went very, very easily, it was so, honestly, for me, I found it to be fun and enjoyable, but I, kind of nerdy like that, I guess, but I really do enjoy listening to what's going on in the community and seeing what our staff does, and I am very appreciative, especially of Mr. Cussera, for our clean audit and the hard work that we've put in, so sincerely, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
Yes, thank you. Well, I'll just briefly echo the gratitude for Saturday's work session. Staff always comes incredibly prepared, it was a great working session, very informative, very educational, and it's, I mentioned earlier how the group of us up here really try to work on the best behalf of the residents, and our staff really works on the best behalf of our city and our residents all the time, so thank you so much for always being so prepared and for doing the best job that you can do, and that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd echo the previous comments. I'd like to thank the city workers who, notice have been busy repainting the lines on city streets, there's some really great work there, saw that along New Germany Traybines, so I'd like to say thank you there. I'd also like to highlight Dayton.com has an unofficial ice cream trail of 10 ice cream shops, three of which are in Beaver Creek.
All right.
So we have been enjoying that, Jeffreys, Ritter's, and Grater's, so with young kids on hot summer days, we have really enjoyed that, and so three of 10 are in Beaver Creek on the Dayton, unofficial Dayton Ice Cream Trail.
Councilmember Bales.
I know where I'm going for the next few days. Councilwoman Schwartz, thank you for bringing up Bob Mills. I think that's, it's an important, he is such an important person to the community, and Beaver Creek would not be what it is today without his efforts and his family's efforts, both from a development, but also from a philanthropy perspective, so, you know, we've lost a great man, for sure. I also wanted to congratulate Mr. Cussera and the entire finance team on the clean audit. I appreciate you taking care of our money and that it's being accounted for and spent correctly, and also want to thank the city staff and the city manager for the retreat we had this past weekend. I think all of the presentations were very well thought out. I think the discussion amongst council members and staff was dynamic, and I just think we've got a good vision for the future, and so I appreciate the work that you've done there. I wanted to remind all of our Beaver Creek businesses that Green County Department of Development is providing small business grants utilizing Cares funding, and I would encourage anyone who has a small business that's had some suffering from the coronavirus to get in contact with them. You can reach them at 562-5007. And I want to also just encourage those folks, our citizens, to get out and shop locally, support Beaver Creek businesses, and I got a chance to visit Southern Ohio Brewery this last week, I really enjoyed it on Factory Road, and if you haven't been there, I would again encourage you to do that, so that's all I've got.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams. We'll get to him, he's got to wait. We'll get back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we seem to thank staff every time we're up here, and there's a reason for that, they really do an outstanding job for our city. They give us information to help us make the decisions that we need to make, and they just do an outstanding job, and I can't say that enough. I'd like to, you know, point out each and every one of them, but all we can do is recognize the gentlemen that are in this room, the ladies, I think Sandra's still here, but they all do such an outstanding job for us. Also wanted to welcome Saxon Financial Services to Beaver Creek, I was able to attend the ribbon cutting for them today. Their new location is on Colonel Glen, so welcome to Beaver Creek. And as Councilman Bales said, please try to support our local businesses during this time, they're out there struggling to make a living and serve us, and trying to do it to keep everybody safe, and please support them. And then the last thing I have is the Police Department is planning to hold a Citizens' Police Academy starting on September 23, running through November 11. It's a great opportunity to receive a better understanding of what our police department does on a daily basis, so anyone out there that's interested, please contact Officer Mark Brown at the Police Department to register. It's a free event, and it's open to any Beaver Creek, Beaver Creek Township resident or business owner 18 and over, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kern, did you have something?
Yes, I forgot it before. The senior citizens are having a lasagna dinner Thursday. It's 10 bucks, or it's $5 apiece, excuse me, and you drive up, you pay your $5, and then you go around to the back, and you pick up your dinner. It's all packaged, and it's a little fundraiser there, so I want to encourage people to stop by.
Very good. And that is being prepared by an outside source, not by our senior staff.
Right.
Right, not the senior staff, it's an outside source.
All right. And as far as mayor's time, everything that's been said up here tonight is very important. You know, our businesses here in town, you know, we don't want to get complacent and say, well, they're open, so everything's okay, but when you're only open at a certain percentage rate of business, it's extremely hard to make profit. I mean, it's that last 10 to 15% of your business that is always your profit margin, and so these businesses are not out of the woods yet, so we need to encourage, you know, to give them as much patronage as we can. I do want to, only thing I'm going to really repeat myself with everything that's been said here, is Mr. Bob Mills, I had the pleasure of getting to know Bob when he was just building business condos, he started builds, that's, he would build a little complex of seven or eight business condos, and he would keep one and rent it, and he'd sell the others, and then he would build another complex, and he would, and he built, and he built. But that's neither here nor there how he did it, but he was one, when he came into the room and said, this is what I'm going to do, you knew that that's what he was going to do. And so I always admired Bob for that fact, that he did business on a handshake, and his word of mouth was his bond, and so he will, his philosophy, and he is an individual as well, but will be missed. And so that said, I'm going to close my section and turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quickly, just a few announcements for us, just reminding everyone that the resurfacing program is going on, so concrete work began last week, it'll continue on, you'll see curbs and some ramps, spot replacements of curbs and aprons being done. A lot of the corners, just want to let you know that when we do resurfacing and start doing curbs, that it is an ADA requirement that we bring the curbs and the ramps up to the curbs up to current code, so when you see that, that's why those are being done, that's part of a requirement. But this will be going on into September, and of course, the repaving and resurfacing, as, again, refer to our website under the engineering, and you can get the list of streets and alternate streets that will be repaved this year. Website redesign, this has just been done, we just relaunched it this past week, this was a redesign to make things a little easier, I appreciate staff, both Diane's and Sandra, they worked very hard on this, updating every single page and making sure it flowed. The redesign is not just in colors and the logo and that kind of stuff, but it is more friendly and more user intuitive, so it is, we actually got some feedback on it from not asking, and people said they appreciated it, that it really flowed a lot better, so thank you to staff for getting that done, making it more user-friendly. If you haven't checked it out, beavercreecohiile.gov. Councilmember Kern, talk about this, drive-through spaghetti dinner, so it's July 30, so Thursday, 5 to 7. Lasagna, spaghetti, it's all Italian, it's all pasta. So it's a Beaver Creek Senior Center Dinner, will include spaghetti salad, garlic bread, and dessert. Event is open to the community, no need, you don't need to be a member or even a senior, so hey, here's a night to support the seniors when you're not a senior. Space is limited, so you must call ahead no later than Tuesday, July 28, and what they mean by space is the number of vehicles trying to get in. So it's $5 members, $10 non-members, cash or check, and credit cards can be taken over to phone when you call to order it, which is 426-6166, 426-6166. And Mayor, you mentioned, but I'll mention specifically, thanks to the sponsor, Day Spring of the Miami Valley, that is our sponsor, that will be providing the food and helping to cook it and warm it up and serve it, proceeds to benefit the Beaver Creek Senior Center. And lastly, tonight, speaking of the seniors, we just wanted to promote them a little bit, although the Senior Center is closed, we want to, there's many ways that we've been trying to actively reach out. Yes, our transportation has limited, so we're taking some to doctor's appointments through our transportation center, but we're offering a lot of plenty of activities, from virtual programming, puzzle pickup, activities, bridge, Uker, dominoes, and much more, and programs, classes, just anything we can do, and we're putting a lot to video, so I will say, please to find out more what's happening at the Senior Center, visit the city's website and go under the Senior Center, and there's videos on exercising, yoga, all kinds of stuff that we're using, links to our YouTube channel, you can directly go to YouTube channel and see it as well, but if you go to the website and look under the Senior Center, you'll find the programming that you may be missing out on, and it kind of helps you when you're not going out much to see some familiar faces and get some exercise and different things that you may not be able to get or realize that you can do sitting, being at home. So that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizen comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address counsel on any issue at all? If there is, please come forward. Everybody's comfortable in their seat, apparently. All right, next item is the last item, do I have a motion? I have a motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, thank you.